Kind of break up.
All right. Good evening. January tenth is the Dyton Historical Commission Regular Meeting. We're at Old Town Hall and on Zoom. It is now six P M. And I'm calling the meeting to order. The listing of the matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next is the Secretary's report. It's the minutes of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes? So, all right, then. Ellen Kane, a motion to table this, the minutes until our February fourteenth meeting? There a second? All in favor? So it's tabled. Okay, Stacy isn't here yet. But just for a matter of keeping the discussion going, did everyone have a chance to review the the listing from Stacy? It was really quite comprehensive. So I looked at it, and I don't know like what your thoughts are on it, but I kind of like tried to group all of Mount Hope stuff together, and then the other stuff, because I was thinking that the Mount Hope area is last time they did the the survey, it was already like eligible for a National Register listing. So if we could possibly go for that to keep that all together and get that done, that would be really huge. But then I was also thinking there are some older homes also in North Dyton, and most of them appeared to be along Lincoln Avenue. So in my thought process, I thought if we did like Mount Hope and then went to the older homes, Lincoln Avenue, and there was a couple on Summer Street, a couple on School Street, no, a couple on School Street, Summer Street, some on Summer Street that were older but didn't make the cut for some reason on Stacy's list, she may have crossed them out. So part of what I want to know is like she added some things to the listing, the rationale behind that, and the some the rationale behind the deletions, a lot of it looked like the buildings had been so altered, they didn't have the historic look to them anymore. So I took the liberty of kind of putting together a list, see if this would might help us to expedite things. So the first part of the list, and I meant to print it in color, of course, I print it in black, so technology at its best. So the first part is like what I think is the Mount Hope section, and then the second part is it's in gray, it starts with Lincoln Avenue, and it's a little grayer, and it's the older homes starting like from seventeen seventy-five to seventeen eighty-ish, I think it was the oldest one. So excuse my lack of technology skills tonight, but that's what we got.
Ask a little question on being the rookie of the group.
Yeah.
What is the intent of this survey? Just to update macros or is there more to it? Than that?
The intent of the survey is to update the macros forms on the Massachusetts Historical Commission website. That's the intent. Now, going forward from that is where any kind of definition of historical significance comes from will be coming from that information. So if you want to do an application like to the National Register of Historic Places, they are going to look at your your community, was there a comprehensive survey done? Are these forms up to date? And then you know, they'll make their determinations from that.
As if it was an individual homeowner or fire building.
No, it couldn't be an individual homeowner can seek that.
What is our thought process? Are we going to have a district and individual homes?
For North Dyton. My personal thought is we would go for a district that would be in the Mount Hope Finishing Company District, and then we may even have a second district in the older homes along Lincoln Avenue.
It is also possible to make the district include the older homes, even though they would not quite amount to.
It depends on how you're going to define your district, I think.
No, it's pretty wide open. Took a seminar on it.
Yeah.
Some towns, it's it's like a shotgun in there.
Right. So we're, you know, if you try to cluster it, you have more chances at districts than if you have things, you know, scattered all over your town.
But it is a lot of this, some of the town.
Right, right, right.
I just wonder what our thought process here was.
And that's one of the things, because we did the survey, the FY twenty-one, twenty-two survey, and we have a lot of information on that. So we have to take a look at all of those different districts and what they include and and what our plan going forward is. So that's going to be like really a focus for us like from February, March is you know, what are we going to focus on? Where are we going with all of this information? What are we going to do with it?
Exactly.
You know, so we have to start making some determinations for that. So you watched the seminar on the National Register ones? That was interesting. Yeah.
They had one today on macros, which I found.
Yeah. Yeah, they they are good. I've seen most of those. Yeah. So so that's my thought process, just an FYI. I don't.
The boss.
Oh, no, don't tell me that.
You're the leader of this, right?
While we're waiting for Stacy to come, we can take some things out of order if you want.
She coming in Zoom or here?
No, she said she was coming in person. Yeah. So. Of course, the other thing is the budget is a big thing on the agenda. Let's make, let's make. If I can have a motion to take the agenda out of order, we'll talk about item seven, eight, and ten others. So that would be the James Briggs Garden sign correspondence and other. Could I have a motion to take the those items out of order? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. So just real quick on the James Briggs Garden sign, the update on the quotes. Thank you, Pat, for making that contact with the woman.
Oh, she's a lovely person.
BP Tech, yeah. Through Pat's contact, I we found out how to fill out the form to get BP involved in on the the James Briggs Garden sign. So I did fill out their online form for their carpentry shop, but I haven't heard from them yet. So I would imagine with school just starting back up, it's not, they'll be looking at it shortly.
Did we get a quote loss as far as how much would those signs be?
Well.
Dollars or five thousand? I had no clue.
A while back, it may have been before you were on, we did look at Panier, Penny, Panier out of Pennsylvania, and their quote was around fifteen sixteen hundred. And of course, they're a company that does it. So that's our whole budget. So. For for it to be done this year, that's the whole budget that would take up, you know, so and the plan is to try and get it done this year.
This week, June.
Yes. So then we, so we're looking at Rafa reached out to pitch signs.
I sent a follow-up email like two weeks ago, no response.
Okay.
I don't know what happened, so.
Yeah, I followed up with Designs to Signs, and I, same thing.
No response.
Yeah, I got an email saying that they're
away.
Away, so. So we're still waiting. BP, it would be they would do the, you know, we probably would have to purchase the materials, I believe it goes. Okay, we would have to purchase the materials, they would do the work, and then we would have to install it.
Oh, that's super.
So.
Other than when he stayed in town, to be honest.
So you know, we kind of have to wait and see how that's all done.
That includes installation?
No, we would have to install it from BP.
Who's the we? You?
No, the town. Okay, I'm I'm. Somehow, we'd figure it out.
Top.
Can I go on?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so.
No, that's good. Just we're going to go through the effort. Like, should we get as we can not have something knocked over?
Right, right. Have it done properly.
Exactly.
You're going to do it, you do it right.
Do it once and do it.
All right, we didn't have any correspondence this time. And under other, we still have one commission position open, so anyone that's interested in applying for it is more than welcome to apply. You had mentioned that there might be somebody, but that John Floman does not live in town.
Didn't mention the name, did I?
No, but I know who it is. It's Eric Schultz.
Yeah, that's the one with the Susan is the middle name. Oh, he doesn't live in town.
No. He used to, he grew up here. Yeah. But he's been mentioned before, so I'm going to email him and tell him he has to move back.
But I mean, it's all right to go ahead and.
Yeah, if anyone's interested, they're more than welcome to come to a meeting, find out what we're about, and fill out a application.
We share a backyard at East.
Okay.
Just didn't want to.
He was approached about joining the Historical Society.
Oh, okay.
His metal detecting neighbor.
Oh, okay, I know who, okay, I know who that is. Yeah. Okay.
Could be both, right?
Right, I'm both.
We're, most of us are both. All right, um, next. This wasn't, I didn't list this, but I got the closure letter for the reimbursement and project closeout for the FY Survey and Planning Grant Project from Mass Historical Commission. So the letter reads, this office processed the final reimbursement of your federal survey and planning grant on twelve thirty twenty-two under the payment voucher, and the the amount of the payment was twelve thousand five hundred, which is our reimbursement amount, and so it should have been sent to the town accountant, and I am following up with her to make sure that they got paid. So that's done. All right. Moving on. Welcome. Come on in, Stacy, come on up and join us. How are you?
I'm well. You're going to email me, I was like, can't remember if it's town. I clearly figured it out.
Yes, one is occupied and one is not.
One's a little.
Hey, well, thank you for joining us tonight.
Oh, Pat, what I have, this this that you handed out, is that one of the two, one, one that was before Stacy had?
No, that bill is my thought process. That's just totally what, how I grouped it, my opinion, what I thought, and I just.
I've got them both.
Yeah, so it's just, it's the way I thought about it. So rather than trying to explain it, I figured I'd just share it with everyone. So, you know, give Stacy a copy. It's nothing, it can be changed.
I had a chance to digest the many, many.
Yeah. I spent some time going through it, Stacy, so I made a little sheet. Okay, and the top part is what I think should be like Mount Hope. It's just, this is just my opinion.
I think that's, you found it, you saw my versions too.
Yeah.
Mount Hope stuff, no, no.
And then on the backside, like after Summer Street, it starts with Lincoln Avenue, where the older homes that I thought should be. You have to pardon the technology, because I meant to print it in color, and it didn't come out, you know, and then it repeated some of the addresses, and I didn't have time to fiddle with it, so I just crossed it out. So. This is update macros. Yes, yes. So. When you're ready, Stacy.
So actually, I even found, I'm just calling up my version, I even found that some of the stuff that I originally thought was Mount Hope, there's actually one of the historic maps, it's actually another company that built some of them on Mount Hope, so I thought, oh, my gosh, there's so many layers.
Yeah.
But it looks like Mount Hope absorbed those. So I chuckled at that, because I was like, of course.
Yeah.
Well, that's what happens when you start to try and figure everything out. I didn't recognize the name right away, but it it ended up getting absorbed by Mount Hope.
Okay.
Okay. One thing, I mean, the original list that I sent back to you was like a hundred and forty, and so that's a little over. One idea I did have is a little different than what we did last time, because so many of these were owned by Mount Hope that like I wouldn't be able to do a D, I'm not, it's going to be very hard to find out who actually lived there, because it's, if Mount Hope owned it the whole time, and you just rented.
Yeah, right.
It's a different sort of creature, as opposed to, you know, an individual house. So one thing I thought of, and I can nibble at it a little bit more, for example, I think it's all Bedford Street, I found an ad. It was, it was all built by one fireproof building company, and that was, and it was in their brochure that wrote, look at these lovely homes on, it didn't say Bedford Avenue, but I figured it out. When it said Mount Hope, I was like, when I drove around, I immediately recognized them. So there is the possibility that maybe we do it like a small area form, and I just described them, and so that you could, you know, in that case, you could count ten as maybe one or two, because I wouldn't be going, spending all the time on the individual building owners, or, you know, I wouldn't have to do all the history, because it's all just Mount Hope. So that's another way of kind of nibbling, you know, the numbers down a little bit too. Some of the others I don't know enough about yet, although the more I drove around, it's, I also changed some of those plans from the Olmsted Brothers, and those helped link them, you know, some of them together. So that is a way to get the numbers down a little bit too. I don't know enough about some of the other streets, but that one was, I'm like, oh, that's an easy one, those are all the, you know, the fireproof ones built by this one company. For some reasons, no.
So when I looked at them, and I, and I made my list there, I kind of grouped all of the Mount Hope. Because that's what we want to focus on. So that takes up a good portion of them, I think it was like seventy-something. This, I ended up with ninety-one altogether, because I included the parsonage, the Christian church on Lincoln Avenue. You had crossed out and said only if it's in a district, and it was looking to me like Lincoln Avenue could end up as a small area form too.
Yeah, it could.
You know.
Yeah, it could. It was really hard to know where to stop, you know.
Yeah.
So because it was, I kept going gonna start, you know, I made some decisions, like, for example, I know also Chase Street, you could go all the way down to the Millikan houses, and I just would, and I realized on some of the Olmsted drawings, those weren't there yet, so I went, okay, that's my line. They weren't in the nineteen twenty-something drawing, I'm going to stop there.
I'm just looking, I think this is the one where you inserted in red.
Yes, it was one of those I was thinking about adding.
Those are like afterthoughts or decided to.
Well, often it was from the list that Pat gave me, so there was like one miss, like it was the whole street, but one was missing. So I was, I thought I put those in, just so you've got, especially if it was a whole row of bungalows, and one happened to be missing from her list.
The only thing I'm questioning on this reason, the only reason I'm looking at, to change, those on, the red ones on Chase Street.
Oh, two oh eight, yeah. I think that, yeah, go ahead.
I'm looking more at the the two twenty-eight Chase Street one, just below the red, last red one. That's my hope.
Yeah, I know, it's.
I think that one, I think that must have been on Pat's original list, and I think I missed it, because it showed up in the Olmsted Brothers Landscape Plans, the early ones, I think that's as far down Chase as they went. They didn't go all the way down, so I stopped kind of where they stopped.
Well, the only, the thing that really flagged me on on that one, besides me and my house, was the fact that it's a bungalow, but it's not really, it's a deep Dutch colonial revival.
Oh, okay, maybe that could be my this type thing, absolutely. I thought they were all of Dutch colonials all the way down.
It's two level, you live in a two-level house, right?
What's that?
You have a first and a second floor, your house?
Yeah.
Okay, I think I think that's just a mistype on mine, because yeah, that.
But I mean, it's got the Dutch.
Right, the Dutch gamboles, yeah, I think that's probably a mistype by my.
Does that mean, if you remember, Pat, mine was not included on on the orig, when we did the snapshot of the assessors master thing, all of this stuff comes from the master file, and we didn't include mine in it at that time, because it was just, it was short by, I think, a year or two from being a hundred years old, so.
Yeah, but it now makes it, because we worked on that like three years ago.
Say that again?
It now makes it age-wise, because.
Yeah, it does make it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Now, although there has been an alteration to that house, not a, well, it depends on what you call it major. If you, if you remember, most, all of those houses, especially in that little village area, Jason Prospect have two outside porches, one on each end of the house, I don't know if you can remember.
Yeah.
Anyway, back in the early seventies, my mother and other people that wanted to put a fireplace on there, so rather than fish it up through the roof of the porch, they, we just took the porch off. So and then we should, you you'd never know that it didn't have a porch when you look at it, but I just I thought it'd be honest to say that has been an alteration to that house.
I would think many of the houses that we look at have alterations, and it's a matter of if the historical integrity has been kept versus changed completely, so it doesn't keep any of those elements that made it historic.
That's not.
Yeah.
And I certainly think when you're looking at them kind of as, especially when you're looking at them as a group, the whole sort of Mount Hope area, and just, you know, there's more variations, just kind of like string the numbers, you know, if you can kind of drive down the street, like, oh, wait, that one looks like, that one looks, so you can tell that you're all part of the piece.
Okay. So your rationale, basically, when the properties that you deleted from, it's probably easier to talk about what you did. You delete, it was basically because they had been altered so much that they didn't have the the elements that would make them historical.
Right, I think certainly some of them up on we were up on some, was it up on Summer? Those that, oh, that's Lincoln, sorry. Self-turned-around. We were. I know, I've got the visual memory of how I, how I did this. I spent a lot of time on it. So that was. Yep, it's the the top end of, the north end of like Summer Street, there were a number of bungalows.
Right.
And they, and they were all they didn't show up in Mount Hope, and then they were all sort of altered, and I thought, you know, let's, if we're cutting numbers, you know, it's an easier case to kind of keep all the Mount Hope stuff together, and then there were a number of them that were gable front, mid nineteenth century, and a lot of them had replacement windows and vinyl siding, and I thought kind of in the larger picture of everything that we've surveyed and Dyton, that we've kind of covered that housing type, so I thought, you know, and balancing it out, I was like, okay, we've done a bunch of these, maybe it's, you know, if we have if we have to make a decision, maybe swap some of those out for something that hadn't been, as you haven't done yet. Because, I mean, at least from the other survey last time, you have a good idea of, you know, that that's a really, those gable front, one and a half story, you know, those are all really common building types, so at least if you needed, if you wanted to do make a decision on one of them down the line, you've got some.
We have some.
You've got, you've got some context to put in, so that was, I think, how I came to that decision.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, those all look like the maybe mid nineteenth, so they're at least eighteen seventies, eighteen eighties. They might be, you know, they could be eighteen nineties, it's a really basic form, but probably they're all well over, they all look like they were nineteenth century, eighteen hundreds to me. Some of the bungalows that were up on the north end of Summer Street, probably nineteen teens, so they're probably just a hundred. But again, we did the Center Street bungalows, and then you're going to have a lot of bungalows. Mount Hope, so it was like, all right.
Right, yeah, so let's.
Be the downside of putting those in macros anyway, because I just took the clock.
Oh, you can, it's just a matter of the budget on this one is only ninety, I think it's ninety, right, it's ninety, not now.
Does that mean it's like a hundred dollars a house or something?
No, it's more like three hundred, two fifty, three, yeah, no, if that's, yeah, that's two fifty, three hundred per, so it just sort of add up. No, it's certainly not a don't do them, it's just don't do them.
It's setting the priorities. First, right.
And usually what I do is, when we've done stuff with the state, one of the requirements is like, I have a money list of what, you know, what you might want to get to next time, just so you have a list, so all of those would still stay on that list.
Right.
I don't think there was anything on your list that was so altered that I couldn't kind of tell what it was. So every once in a while, we get I think somewhere under there, there might be something, but no, so those can all stay on the list, just, it was just a matter of priorities on how to get to your ninety, what would be the best bang for your buck.
Right, okay.
Can you tell a CS house from another?
Not right off, no, no, I can't write off, because you know what, they've often had just enough little tweaks, and you, and Dyton, you've got, there's some builder who had a lot of fun with the bungalows, and I circulated the photos to other architectural historians, and they're like, what's we, what's going on? And I'm like, they don't know, so there's somebody who had something very idiosyncratic going on.
I love the bungalow.
Okay, so much fun. We're under, we have times.
Yeah, two other people who are not, probably not as excited about bungalows as we are.
Does anyone have preference ideas, how they wanted to see this project, properties on this project? But.
Ideas in general?
I mean, what at, did you think about what addresses, what properties you wanted Stacy to do, what ninety, what priorities do you think she should do?
I do have, if I remember the text in in her original email which you forwarded the thing from, I think he's, I think Stacy says something about Mount Hope Management, you know, like Milliken's House at the end of.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't imagine how you couldn't incorporate that, if it.
Yeah, those actually, when the the whole area was done about twenty years ago, kind of in a more general way, and those houses were actually fairly had better, had pretty fairly good representation in that area form, it was a really general area form, it was like, there's some Mount Hope stuff, there's some of this, and they did, I I thought they actually did a fairly good job with those, a little more specific on those, so I thought they had enough that would probably, when you draw, when you, if you were to draw a historic history someday, if that's your plan around all of Mount Hope, those were probably good enough for now that they didn't, because we could spend a lot of it's, and there's a ton of stuff in the Olmsted Archives about all the plantings and everything, so I think those are fairly well those are good enough for now, that I think it'll get to where you need to go.
We've used that information.
We've used that information even though it's in the older.
Yeah, that actually was a little detailed, so I think you can pull from the older form for those guys.
Because those forms don't disappear, the older forms don't disappear.
They'll still be on Macris, and so you can have your old forms, and you'll have your new forms to take a look at.
And I thought those were in better, those were more detailed, so you could still use those, I think, for whatever plans you've got. Whereas some of them were, like the bungalows, they were just gonna say, the older form just said, and then there's some bungalows. It's like, okay, so that was good, they said what was there, but it wasn't detailed.
Right, right.
That's what houses at Park Street, I've been having years.
Uh, Park Street. Those, I wasn't sure on, those were ones I added, um, so I wasn't quite sure of. I know some of these other dates were either, um, dates I had a good feel for, or dates that Pat had pulled from, um, the assessor's database. And, oh, Park Street, yes, those, I'm not sure of those dates, but those are ones that do actually appear in the Olmstead Brothers' plans. Originally, the plans had a big hotel there, and they didn't build the hotel. So, um, yeah, that was, wow, it was hard to imagine, but it was a really big hotel, right where those houses are. So I think those are, those are there by nineteen-twenty. I just wasn't quite sure what date. But I think I have, and there's a nineteen-twenty plan that has them on there.
Has a plan for them, or has them there?
Um, it looks like they are there, in the, they, they, there's drawings, it's hard to tell, because everything's not as built, I have found out. Like, there, there's plans, but you can see the, the buildings with those footprints exist on one of the plans. There's four hundred and something plans.
Those houses were probably built when, uh, the Olmstead Brothers, uh, following the Olmstead, Olmstead Brothers', um, plan that was executed.
Yeah, I think it, it looks like there were some.
Twenty-one or twenty-two?
That's on most of them, yeah. Later than that, so they don't even make the hundred-year.
Those houses are old.
Park Street was empty, was pretty empty, twenty-one. I brought something for you to see, later, not now.
Okay.
Um, so I, I don't think they're old enough.
Oh, okay.
Because that's an interesting question, because it's you have to figure out.
Are they in the midst of, but they're in the midst of.
Landfall.
No, but what I'm saying is, we're doing the dis- a district, if you're thinking district-wise, they're gonna be in the middle of the Mount Hope District.
And, and any, actually, and if you were looking at his, like a National Register District, anything over fifty years is, um, is fair game, we're just kind of saying. But, so they're certainly well within, um.
That might be worth one of the trades, trading one of the oh, why ask for the houses?
There are, the Park Street's already on, is it Park Street or Park Avenue? Great, Park Street.
Okay, so that's what I thought, but then I'm there, that was in their, the plans that were there in the twenties. I mean, I had, it's hard to tell from just, um, looking at them quickly, what was executed, you know, what date they were, if they were actually there, um.
But even if they're not quite the, at the one hundred, they're close.
Part of what would make one of the areas of significance would be that the, would be the Olmstead Brothers' design of the whole thing, and so if they were saying, you know, these buildings should go, you know, we think instead of the hotel, there's also a plan for the hotel, that these houses should go here, that's all part of their design, so, I mean, that's certainly, um.
Were they management houses? I'm not familiar with.
I couldn't, from looking at it quickly, I couldn't quite tell.
It looks like it.
They sure look like they, they, yeah. Um, yeah, maybe not, maybe not the Milliken owners sort of end of things, but maybe that top tier.
Right.
Yeah, and I didn't, I don't have enough yet to know who, who was there, there may be, there's a lot more files.
Okay. But I think they're an important piece of, of the area.
Them as sort of the, also, I thought that was the very, you know, that's the part that's right, see first, that's very, it's right across the street from the, um, factory that made me think that those were meant to be.
Majestic and, yeah.
And that's all within those, kind of like the first couple of houses on that block of Chase, those were all within the Olmstead. So I thought that that, we can verify that those were in their, in their hand.
Okay, okay. Anything else? Stacy, you need from us tonight, which properties to work on?
Yep, um, so you got it down to ninety-one, it looks like.
Yeah, that's, that's my thinking, I don't know if anyone else has.
I'm impressed. You might have a little wiggle room if you wanted to do like those fireproof houses, um, uh, on Bedford, since they're all the same design. Those I might be able to do as like a small area form, and that, you know, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't have to go into all the, you know, research about who built them and who lived there, because I, it's just Mount Hope.
Right.
So you might have a little more wiggle room to get maybe another half dozen if you wanted to as well.
You were actually not gonna go as an interview?
No, this is just exterior.
No, I stay on the sidewalk. People.
Space more on paperwork.
Right, exactly, so if I were doing an older house, you know, that wasn't a Mount Hope, I'd be doing, like I did in the other forms, I'd be doing the whole, uh, chain title and history for those, so, um, yeah, this will be a little different, because I know it was all built by one company, Mount Hope, so there's a little more room there to wiggle with.
So if that becomes one area form.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly add another six if you wanted.
Add another six to it. Which I would think would be more towards Lincoln Avenue and that area, because to keep that, see if we can get another district together.
Yeah.
Because there were some like, um, there's quite a few up on School Street, too.
I was thinking that, yes, School Street, there's some, some older ones in there as well.
Yeah, like on my, the ones that I picked. It was one, two, three, three of them from School Street, because Mount, was there, um, and one more, because it was an older home, it was like from seventeen eighty.
Oh, yeah, there was six twenty-one.
Yeah.
That little guy, okay.
Now, was Lincoln Avenue kind of related to or made it with the paper mill or the other mills down by the bridge? I'm trying to picture in my mind how Lincoln grew.
It, it, yeah, definitely with the mills. It was interesting how, um.
There were a number of factories along there.
Right, right.
Yeah, so I think that's what, that was definitely part of, um, yeah, and it's, it's funny to see where all, where all the streets came in, as Mount Hope came in, as the Olmstead Brothers got involved, it started to get very interesting, but yeah, Lincoln was there, um.
Kind of like another Mount Hope, but it's a.
A smaller, right, something about how, right, it's a different creature, yeah. Oh, right, and there was one that had been a, um, a parsonage or a church, I think that one had been, that might have been, that was altered, yeah.
Yeah, um.
Refreshing my memory now.
There was that one, too. There was a church factory.
Yeah, it was a little bit of a.
The duplex on that, that Lincoln.
Oh, that was two oh six Lincoln, that we were, it's the church factory school. All right.
Have to compare this with mine, but I think yeah, you've got a, you've got a wish list for the, um, the ones you pulled, you could certainly at least another half dozen. Very curious to see who, like, architect of the bungalows is. Oh, and I think, oh, and six one six School Street, I think might be another, there were some photos in the Olmstead files, and that one stuck out. I think that's one that they got put in, that's a Mount Hope one as well.
Right. Does anyone else have any other input on addresses or properties?
Are we using? Uh, it, it's just, it become the agreed-on list, or?
That's, yeah.
Okay, so I don't know, I don't, I don't know how to reject any of these.
Yeah, actually, you want one hundred and forty done.
Right.
Price of ninety. I know, um.
It was hard to, I, that's why I didn't, you, you'll see, I didn't cut it down too much, because it was a hard decision.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've got a hundred and fifty-something on mine, I actually, actually saw a slightly. That's a good one, that's a good one, um, let's see, I think I pulled, oh, and I pulled a couple on Andrews that I wasn't quite sure about.
How many were identified as Mount Hope that you're sure of?
It looked to me like there was around seventy.
Yeah, I think.
Seventy.
And of that, of that early, the early era of Mount Hope up until like the mid twenties.
Right.
I think like, it's harder to tell, like, I know Chase Street filled in, and there are other, so I would just kind of start with what looked like the Olmstead Brothers.
And how does that relate to the budget? Does that leave us a lot of moving on? On Mount Hope houses.
Well, it's ninety properties, that was around seventy, so.
A good twenty.
There's about twenty. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Then they'll rest in based on whatever. Because you are, we already got more than.
Right, and that's what I tried to do on the list that I shared, my, my list that I shared with you, when I was, because I did that this afternoon, and, um, because I was thinking about it, it's like, I, I had to see them all lumped together. So I lumped all of them on Hope, and then on the back, I put the ones that basically were coming from Lincoln Avenue, one from School Street, some, two from School Street, and Summer Street. One from Summer Street, because those are the older homes.
I think it's a really interesting, I like the contrast too, between, you know, Lincoln, you know, Lincoln, which is right along the water there, and that's, you know, that's your nineteenth century, and then Mount Hope comes in, and it's, you know, next generation, I like the contrast between the two, so I think that's, I think it's a nice balance, um. And hopefully what you'll be able to do is, um, with the Mount Hope, you know, I'll have, there'll be a context for how it all fits, that hopefully you'll be able to just kind of start. I won't have, you won't have to redo a history for Mount Hope, that you'll just be able to kind of plug in another street and plug in another street.
Right, right.
Because once the history is set, that's a little easier, whereas the ones on Lincoln, um, will all, since they're, they're all one of us, they'll all have their own history, so I think it's, you know, you wanna, it makes me work harder. For Lincoln, because that's, you know, that'll be more.
Right.
Those are more individual, and that's kind of tell the sto- that'll tell the story of how those all developed.
So is that to be final for you, or do we say?
Um.
Do the Mount Hope works for us, by then we'll figure out what.
I think we just.
You can, you can, I'm, I'm not gonna start doing, uh, research or photos until you tell me. So you don't have to, if you, if you want to gnaw on it a little bit longer, you can.
No, um, no, I would say that, um, as far as how it's attacked, that's up to Stacy, because that's for her job, we just say that these are the properties that we want done. You know, um, and Stacy is really good at, if she finds something that she thinks should be added, she'll come back to us. Or something that isn't working out, she'll come back to us again, too, so, um.
Yeah, sometimes I get surprised when it's not what I thought it was.
Yeah, yeah, so, all right, I think we're good. Um, I'll entertain a motion to accept the final street listing as discussed. There are seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I, okay, thank you. Next step, I can't wait to see them.
Yeah, and it's, you know, now is the mad dash between now and leaves, you know, before the leaves pop, because you'd be amazed how hard it is to photograph a house once the leaves are out, so.
So you'll be around town, you know, you'll see me.
Yep.
If anything called.
Has all my info, so, um, and I've got all my letters of intro. I've still only ever had one scary incident, so, and it wasn't here, so that's good. Yes, I've only had one person who was like, do not photograph my house.
Okay, so if you need anything, you.
You know, yeah, I know, I know where to find everybody, and I'll be, I'll be contacting okay, commaging through the Historical Society soon enough.
Alrighty.
Sure, I'm glad I could make this work, and the lot, Somerset Library was perfect.
Oh, great.
I hunkered down, I got a lot of work done.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is CPC application for review for Smith Memorial Hall. Come on down. Sure, I can move over. We don't bite. I'm not, I, I need Secretary Mike.
But a master was on. I'm just gonna pull up the, um, the PowerPoint that Holly did.
Okay. Robert, you're gonna have to keep a eye on there in case anyone there has a question. That's your job.
I'll have things like the slide and the application for eligibility.
Oh, okay, okay. Ronnie, you're gonna do the intros?
Starting.
Okay.
Hi, everyone, I'm, I'm Ronald Connor, I'm the co-chair of the Dyson Public Life Building Committee with, with Ken Pacheco, and, um, I'll just have a few welcoming remarks first of all, thanking all of you to be part of this heading journey for the Dyson Public Library. It's been trustee since two thousand and eight, and part of the history of, uh, trying to get a new space, library since the early two thousands, um. It's so, it's a very exciting time for the town, and certainly appreciative of the support of the, uh, people in the town for, um, the acquisition of the Smith Memorial Hall and your important role here in, um, our proposal for restoration and rehabilitation of that space. I, I, I've done a little bit of research, and I just want to share what I think is an interesting and/or exciting coincidence. That Smith Memorial Hall was constructed in eighteen eighty-nine, and five years later, the Dyson Free Library was established with, um, a hundred dollars in books from the state. And a year later, in eighteen ninety-five, um, the first trustees were elected, and the library found a home in this building. About twenty-five dollars was appropriated in the nineteen ninety, eighteen ninety-five, uh, town meeting to create a room in this building for the Dyson Free Library. Fifteen years later, it moved to the Carnegie Building, but I, I'm gonna take a little bit of historical license here, and imagine those first trustees in this building, knowing that there's a magnificent hall down the street in Smith Memorial Hall, and saying, someday we'll have a building quite like that one.
History repeats itself.
I'm sure they're happy to know that we're moving forward into that space, so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Holly, um, for the presence.
Can we, um, introduce ourselves all, all the way around?
Okay, Commissioner, thank you for your time tonight. Uh, my name is Holly Roach Robinson of Granite City Partners. I'm joined here by Joseph Shay of Granite City Partners and Jim Edwards, Holmes and Edwards. Granite City Partners is the owner's project manager on this project. Jim Edwards is the architect.
Okay, I'm Pat Gales, and I'm the chairperson of the commission.
Say hello.
I'm Irene Alley, commission member.
Ryan Smith, commission, commission member.
Adelson, she member.
Raffa Delphine, vice chairman.
Having us this evening.
Bear with me, uh, while I repeat.
Bear with me while I repeat a little bit of history that I'm sure many of you know. Smith Memorial Hall was built in eighteen eighty-nine in the form of Alfred Smith's wife Anne. Alfred Smith was a wealthy um, real estate broker out of Newport, Rhode Island. And um, his wife Anne was a native of Dayton. He commissioned architect John Dixon Johnston, oh. He commissioned uh, architect John Dixon Johnston to design the building, which um, is reflected in the building you see today. This building obviously is a great historic asset to the town of Dayton. I believe it's largely in part one of the reasons why the town decided to purchase and acquire the building. Um, this past year. With the town now owning the building, uh, we are putting a proposing from um. Interior modifications to help maintain and protect the building uh, for future use of the town. So we are proposing a CPC application um, to go in next week. To do these moderate modest um, reconfigurations of the interior space. That is largely in part to ensure ADA compliance. We're also proposing to install some energy efficient. Heating, um, air cooling, some lighting and some plumbing associated with those configurations. Currently underway, um, the town is giving some exterior renovations to the building. The exterior is of made of cedar shingle siding. And it's beyond its useful life. Um, so we are currently replacing the both that siding with red cedar shingles. We are restoring um, or replacing if needed, soffit, fascia and other building elements. And we're installing some blown-in insulation to help with that deficiency. Um, these activities are are being performed just again to help watertight the building, weatherproof it, make sure that um, it will stand the test of time in the future. And uh, that has been funded by a town appropriation and a state budget line item to date. The interior restoration and rehabilitation that we're proposing today, um, or I guess next week to the CPC also today. Is intended to protect and maintain the building for future use um, as the doubt Dayton Town Library. Um, we want to be clear that this rehabilitation work is not intended to radically change the character defining aspects of the building. We really are trying to work with all the historic aspects and character of the building to make sure that that shines through. And you know, remains to shine through as we we make these modifications. Um, and again, largely in part, these modifications are being driven by providing a barrier-free safe access to the building. This might be a little bit hard to see on the screen here, but um, we have the current layout of the building. For um, orientation, the bottom of this slide here is the front of the building. Main Street is at the bottom of this slide. You see the curvilinear uh, window in the front. And then what I would call the back of the building is the kitchen, stage and office area. The building currently can be accessed by um, a ramp to the left of the building and also um, through the front doors via stairs. As you go into, oh, my apologies, the right of the building, as you go into the right of the building, um, ahead of you is a accessible restroom. To the right is some office space. And then to the left is a large assembly area with a stage um, towards the front of the room or towards the back of the building. Off of that um, stage area is a kitchen that is depressed from the main floor and from the stage area. It can only be accessed by stairs going down. Some of the modifications that we are proposing is to bring that stage um, area. Or make that stage area more accessible by adding in a um, handicap ramp to the stage. Um, bringing the floor level of the kitchen up to the stage, we're very lucky that the the height of that kitchen allows for that. So there'll be um, one grade, a singular grade that will be more accessible for everybody. Reconfiguring the area in between the kitchen and the stage, there are some bathrooms there, but they're not efficient use of the space currently. Posing, removing a bulkhead that has blocked over some stairs to the basement. And um, just creating a a level four there. And then just reconfiguring those bathrooms, so they're more accessible from that stage area. Towards um, the front of the building and that curvilinear space, we are also proposing to remove that stairway to the basement as well. And to block that area off. Just again, that the basement is. Uh, will only be accessible from the exterior of the building at that point. And that is again, to create more usable space in that curvilinear. Area of the building. These interior modifications will set the building up again for ADA access for efficiency. But also set the building up for a proposed layout. It works in harmony with the proposed layout that we have here um, for the future Dayton Town Library. Large um, assembly space will become the adult collections and reading room. The curvilinear room in the front will become a teen room or is proposed to become a teen room. The kitchen space that we are um, raising the floor on would become a craft program room. And the stage would become a children's room. Of the building would become a new space. Just for some photos of, if you've never been inside of the building. The photo here on the left shows the uh, current main area of the building that's accessible via that ramp on the outside of the right of the building. And um, the photo on the right shows the curvilinear space, the inside of it. It's a little hard to see, but you can see that stairwell that takes up the entirety of that from there.
What's come out? Will the librarian have her own office?
As far as I know, I don't.
The library will have, the librarian will have a back of the house area for production and for office space. Um, but it won't be the space that is marked office uh, on the plan. The, it'll be in uh, back of the space and then their working area will also be within the general circulation of the main area. The um, I'm gonna go back one, but. So there's a small back of the house section uh, for the librarian. It's uh, it's labeled as ST on slide number five. Book processing, repairs, that type of work.
So there's two STs there.
Oh, pardon me. Um, the one, it is uh, off of the stage between the stage and the office. Towards the right-hand side.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I keep pointing that out.
On the right here shows that kitchen area that is um, depressed from the stage area. Uh, shows the height that is in that room that would allow us to raise the floor. In that space.
I think it's remarkable what good condition the inside of the building is. You know, I've been in there, most of us.
Yeah.
You know, it's just remarkable.
Uh, we will get into it, but looking to preserve a lot of, a lot of that character, use the wainscoting in areas, for example, the staircase we were moving.
Good, yeah.
Use the ten-foot doors.
Yeah.
Um, that for compliance reasons uh, need to be modified, but that can be part of the features.
Right.
Within the existing building.
Right, so you don't lose all of those little details.
Correct.
If you're raising the floor of the kitchen, level of the stage. Are we talking about how high? It's like, it looks like it's almost like four feet high.
Twenty-eight inches?
Just under thirty inches.
Thirty inches?
Yes.
What about the space underneath the new floor? Can that be used as a storage? It won't be.
Under the existing kitchen is a storage room from the basement. Um, that also has easily an eight-foot clear height, uh, but there will be a false floor, that twenty-eight inches will be a false uh, floor between the two.
Is this layout approved by the building inspector and all of them? Missioners, toilets and all the stuff.
Right there, ask it, right there.
Very close to the various uh, designers.
Jim is the building inspector, I don't know if you've met Jim.
Perhaps not.
I just want to be sure that you're happy with this.
Have a question on that raising of the floor. So the uh, the stage would be the existing state, what would be the children's room there?
Correct.
So. Raising the uh, kitchen, which is with the, what what is that? Craft program workroom?
Yes.
So um, so how do you become, although the main floor, the adult collections reading room. Would still be lower than the stage floor, is it right?
That is correct.
So how do, how does that become ADA compliant? You have some four or five steps.
We're proposing to install a ramp in the front, the children's room. That will lead to a platform and then it will also be accessible by stairs and that will bring you up to that grade. Um, which would be the grade of the state, stage and the craft room or the kitchen.
Well, that that would make it bring you up to the level of the raised floor, if you will, I suppose, right?
Correct, yeah.
But what about if someone wanted to, uh, well, so you'd have another entrance for the adult collections reading room? How would, how would someone who wanted to go up into the children's room, who needed the ADA compliance? Get down to the adult correct uh, collections reading room floor?
From a ramp that is in front of the stage, so someone who uh, needed the ADA would enter through the side door. On the right that Joe was pointing to, they would be able to access the adult collections reading room and the teen room. And the meeting room and the um, accessible bathroom, that's all the same grade.
Okay.
And then the, there would be a ramp, we're proposing a ramp in front of the children's room that would lead you up to that grade there.
How many emergency exits are there?
Four.
Four.
It's the occupancy. I haven't calculated, I don't know what a lot of furniture and fixtures within. But I would guesstimate would be somewhere between fifty-five and eighty-five questions.
So three hoppers.
I'm sorry?
Three hoppers is a nice.
Details.
We want to get that right.
Question about the current heating system, I I I was lucky enough uh, to. For the church people there to give me a tour of the building just on my request. And um, down in the basement, uh, I noticed a furnace that was, looked to me very new. Hot air furnace, um, but in the. Proposal, you have installed energy efficient heating and air conditions. That has been replaced with the current uh, hot air furnace that looks, doesn't look very old.
I think the church put that in, actually.
The church put that in.
Yeah, you are correct, the the furnace that's there now is a new appearance, however, it's oil-fired. Its efficiency rating at best is around eighty percent, so it's not very efficient. That means every dollar that goes in, twenty, twenty percent of it goes up in the chimney. Couple that with the fact that the building is not energy efficient, which we're working on, and right now we're going through a lot of oil, as the church did previously. So although we'll curb some of that with the energy upgrades to the building, we're still have a fish, uh, an efficiency rating of only eighty percent. Going with um, a heat pump style HVAC system would bring that efficacy up to over ninety-five percent. So we're really trying to look to keep the operating costs of the, of the library in check, because we are going from a smaller building to a much larger building. So we're trying to combat that with the investment in the additional technologies. The other thing is there's no air conditioning in that building right now, we just have heating. So we're not gonna, uh, with the current system, we, we would either have to retrofit it, which would further reduce the efficiency. Um, or put in an air conditioning system in anyway. So the heat pump style technology checks off both boxes at the same time.
Is that heat pump?
However.
However.
However, um, James and I have had a lot of discussions about those things on the wall of that building. And we won't be doing that. We're gonna do a ducted style system, so that all of the uh, overall appeal of the aesthetic of the building remains intact. So um, so it's a little bit more costly for those systems, but we don't have the wall hangers like we have in here.
But you could use still a lot of the ducting, the existing ductwork, right?
No, you cannot, no.
So how does?
But all of that's been figured into the cost of this project.
It's being figured into the. And it'll be part of our final application to.
Okay.
For funding, yes.
Okay.
What you expect to pay back with? Because of the efficiency of the system, so what over a number of years.
So we haven't owned the building very long, but I can tell you that we do not want to keep that building with oil, that is for certain. So yes, we'll see a payback in very short time.
Right, does this system have a? Uh, I used to, believe it or not, be in HVAC kind of things and um. Uh, the people that I know who have heat pump based systems on like, like that. Um, but then they're not new either, so they have what, like a platinum base. Blower base, uh, like an hot air furnace. But it has, it's a heat pump that does do double duty with the AC and so forth.
Right.
And I think also, well, some of them have a um, electric heat backup in case it gets really cold.
They do have resistance heating, so right now the technology goes down to minus fifteen degrees in heat pump. However, they lose their efficiency when they go anytime below twenty, fifteen to twenty degrees above freezing.
Okay.
So they do have heat resistant seating as a backup in case we need it. Um, so you know, all that's being factored in, certainly, we think with the energy efficiency rating of the delta is much lower than what it is now. And if we have hopefully a well-used building, it has bodies in there, will help uh, will help heat it as well.
Right.
This is Jonathan Gale, I'm assuming you, you can all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm gonna put on two hats for a minute for a couple of comments in general. One is the hat as the ADA coordinator and also as the CPC liaison with the library committee for this project. First, for the ADA component, um, I I will say that I think the um, that Mr. Aguiar, along with the consultants, have worked very hard. To make sure that everything that needs to be accessible in the building will be accessible for people with disability. The, this includes, when we, they made reference to the, the children's area and to what is now the kitchen area. And for example, will be used for crafting, those counters are gonna be leveled at thirty inches roughly. So that persons with disability and kids with disability who are in wheelchair also have access to roll up and do what they need to do and enjoy the same. You know, the same resources that anybody else would be able to enjoy. Similarly, the lavatory in that area. Which will be in the children's area, it's my understanding, will also be made accessible. And that's an important factor, because if kids are doing crafts and they have, uh, you know, paint, whatever they might have. They otherwise would have to go into the other accessible restroom through the other part of the library. And that's a con, that's a consideration that I think is being looked at as well. I don't know how that's been quite resolved yet. With regard to the outside ramp, the the ramp itself is in good shape, it may or may not need to be moved a little bit. Um, Mr. Aguiar, Aguiar and I are gonna, gonna look at that as well. But it's only because the windows, when they're open, all the waste swing out. And when the windows swing out, they may be in the way of the ramp. So it is possible that there may have to be a slight change there and that's something to be visited. Um, the Jocelyn and I, the librarian, are currently working on a couple of grants. One is a twenty thousand dollar grant, which would allow us to bring accessible services and resources into the library. That would be workstations that are accessible, that would be technology that's accessible, including speech enabled for visually impaired people. That would allow us to bring in some programs for persons with disability, for seniors, for veterans who have disability or educational projects as well. So the other thing we're looking at is the bookshelves, there's another grant we're looking at for bookshelves, that's, this is a. That's, this is a, if, if this grant were approved, it's also worth a couple of hundred thousand dollars. Towards the project, and that's a capital component of it. Um, that one would be used potentially for the purchases of other types of equipment. For new bookshelves, tables, chairs, things of that nature. For that, for that location as well. So I just wanted to, to give you some other insight into some of the other things that are going on as well with regard to the whole process. None of this affects the historical integrity of it. At all, but it all meets the new criteria for accessible requirements that we have to meet. Um, which we were not able to meet before. The other thing that I'm going to say, switching gears for a minute and putting on my CPC hat. And I'm sharing this information. At the request of the CPC Chair, Kevin Smith Jr., and that is that. In the application information that we provided. To everyone, to uh the library committee, to the um consultants as well. One of the requirements was that we needed to have a placeholder. For this event to be presented, for the application itself to be presented. At our CPC meeting next Thursday, fourteen days in advance. And as of now, we don't have anything presented. So it may not be able to be on the plate for next Thursday's meeting. Which in that case, we'll put it on the February meeting. But I just wanted to let everyone know because no one has submitted a request to have anything put on as a placeholder. And I'll leave it there for a few minutes.
No. Thank you, Jonathan. That's.
So one of the things, it's important for us, and we don't want to assume many things, we want to. Check the appropriate part that we don't. So that's why, I mean, I mean, again, I mean, if we. So we wanted to come before your commission first, so to get your feedback and buying because. I mean, it can be easy to assume, so, but we really want to make sure this whole process is authentic for us and. Like in the appropriate boards and. So yeah. So everyone who has really like a stake in helping to define this, so really has the ability to do that at the appropriate time.
And I just want to add there to follow up on, on what um Michael is saying. What's important to realize is that there's not a hard, fast deadline. For this to make it, for example, I know some people have talked about making it to the June town meeting. If this doesn't get looked at until February, for example. That may push it back further to the, the special time meeting. I'm not here to suggest which way to go or which way not to go, but what I do want every one of you to understand at least is that. This is not a hard, fast, drop dead time for, for the June meeting automatically. So it's more important, and, and I hear what the town administrator is saying, to take the time and, and do the I's and the T's to make sure that everything is done completely the way. It has to so that everybody is on board with this project.
So tonight we'll do our part of it to move it forward, and that's all we can do tonight.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Mike. Holly, you got more?
I have one more slide. Just on timing. Um. But um, but Jonathan did cover a little bit, but. Um, we do hopefully plan to get in front of the CPC either in, in January or February this year. Um, and if there is a CPC approval, an approval by the historical commission. And approval at town meeting in June, then we'll be able to start construction in July. Um, it would take about eighteen months. Um, to complete the project, so we're anticipating uh with that schedule that the construction would be completed in winter twenty twenty-four. Um, again, that, that schedule could potentially slide. The application slides, but. That's sort of current schedule that we have.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions?
I read some place these steps, the last ones in this. This is just something I.
Not there now.
Thing about that map from this into town, so I don't know if. That was recently changed or.
I don't remember staying glass windows being there.
Okay.
So, all right, so we have two things that we need to do tonight. Um. We have to. Designate the Smith Memorial Hall as being locally significant, historically significant. Um, in order for the CPC to consider it. That's one thing. And then we have to decide. Uh, whether or not to support the funding process for the project. So, um. I shared with everyone the Form B. From the um past survey, that is, or the Mass Historical Commission. And certainly, um, with this updated form, we have lots of historical information and why it's important to Dayton. Does anyone have anything to add about the history of it or? Any comments about being locally significant? Then I'll entertain a motion to identify the Smith Memorial Hall as locally significant in the history, archaeology, architecture, or culture in the town of Dayton.
A second.
No.
Oh.
Okay. Is there a second? Second. Um, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, I'll entertain another motion to support the renovation plans. For the Smith Memorial Hall and the CPC funding efforts.
To find support.
Write a letter of support that it's locally significant and that, and we're in favor of the project moving. The project moving forward. I can't, we can't say anything about the finances because it's.
No, no, support is very.
So we support it to move forward. Move forward.
Submit a letter.
Yes.
Yes.
And just submit a letter, a letter of support, like, like you're wording. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, and that passes. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I will wrap the letter and get it. Mike and CPC to the CPC. For what, the nineteenth? Bill, you meet on the nineteenth?
Oh, CPC type.
Yeah.
Well, I wasn't aware of the uh fourteen day thing, but. I was probably not going to bring it up.
Okay.
But uh Jonathan did anyway, but uh. That's the only thing I don't, that's unclear right now.
All right.
I did just look in the rates, the new policies, uh. Okay, I wasn't able to see any for. Any fourteen day requirement there. But I just actually reached out to the CPC GM and I wanted to make sure we're on the same page on this thing going forward.
Right.
So like in that, so there aren't any other requirements that. So aren't in the actual application. Power package itself.
Well, so I'll have the letter of support to Kevin before the nineteenth.
We're gonna stay on a brisk timeline, and we appreciate your, your endorsement before we got in queue. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. It's a very important building.
Thrilled with how far we've been able to get so far.
I know.
The town have really crafted a great plan to acquire the buildings, how to restore the buildings, and then working on the plan.
Yeah.
For the library relocation, it really. Right, creative and innovative.
Right.
Wonderful to see.
So, it's good.
So thank you for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. You.
Hi. My secretary has. There we go. Oh, it's just sex again.
All right, it was nice to meet you. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Should be good. Oh, no, that's, oh my god. Thank you, sorry.
The two of them did together. I wondered if, if H. Richardson knew Mr. Dixon.
Oh, he.
When Shinglestone Building's even reported the same. There's connections.
Okay. All right. Now the fun part.
The budget.
Budget.
In my, can I ask a question about the, we're gonna be working.
The what?
In my ignorance, can I ask a question about the, the budget?
Go ahead.
Uh, example is if we knew there was. Extended here, like the sign, okay? Would that not be on the budget? As a line item? I don't see anything really that.
No.
Specific to a.
No, it would fit under one of those categories, and most of the times they've been going under others. I think it is.
Eight hundred dollars. So it's.
Yeah.
I don't, would that be an adjusted part that we have to fill out?
Right. Well, the process, this is the first year that there, we are doing. Um. The zero. Base budgeting. So you start at zero and then add to it. Our budget, we have. Equipment and repairs, maintenance. Professional and technical communications, other supplies and travel. Those are the categories that we have.
Very familiar, generic type.
Hmm, right.
Line items.
Right. Um. Equipment and repairs, the only thing that we've ever paid for is the repair for our, our case over there. That's the only thing that we've ever had. Professional and technical would cover anything like our. If we were going to do the GSI mapping. And. FY twenty-four, going to conferences, um, workshops, anything like that. Communications. Usually is the mailings that we have to do. Um, other supplies really encompasses everything else that we do. Our office supplies, where our signs have been paid for, our Boston Post came, sign came out of, plaque came out of that. And then there's travel. So. What's our pleasure on the budget? Our budget this year is sixteen hundred dollars, but that includes the six hundred dollars for. The GIS mapping for. Um. The survey project that will be completed in June. For FY twenty-four, we don't have the GS, any GSI mapping that we need to take care of.
But we will have the sign.
The sign may come out of FY twenty-three budget. The budget that we're already in. Depending on cost and how it all flows out.
We have room for it in this.
In FY twenty-three, we kind of have a, our plan was to get it going. It depends on when we get the quotes. If it's affordable and we decide it's affordable, and then what do we do from there?
I want to be clear that there's no stained glass on the side.
No stained glass.
That was for you, Ron, did you get? Don't fire on all.
Okay, so. What's our pleasure under equipment repairs and maintenance?
What's it this year?
I think we had fifty, we had fifteen for this year.
We're not anticipating anything, then just start off by putting the.
Yeah, you want to put, okay. Please.
Y'all want to go home at some point, yeah.
Well, I got a phone on there.
You can stay. It's all right.
I was thinking about in the near future bringing up having some of the town buildings have signs.
Which. Yeah, we've talked about that, yeah. Yeah.
And here again. I think we're much better off anticipating some of these.
So that, could, could you hold that thought till we get to other supplies?
If that's where you want to put it, yep.
Yes. Okay.
As long as it'll float to play the account.
For under professional and technical. That's for going to conferences and workshops. I know. The Plymouth. Preservation Conference should be this year.
Usually September, right?
It's usually in September. Should be this year or next year? Next year. There's that one. There's also the Mass History Alliance. They have a conference. Looking at the cost of those two, the one in Plymouth is usually around eighty-five dollars, ninety dollars. The one in Worcester I looked at was like a hundred and sixty dollars. I guesstimated seven hundred dollars, saying a hundred dollars per person for each of us to go to a workshop or a conference, just kind of. Pulled an average out of it. Not everyone always goes for whatever reasons, um.
There were one day conferences and not all nighters.
There are one day conferences.
And not all nighters.
Yeah.
But depending what committee you're on.
The um, the six hundred dollars for GIS mapping. Be completed. Now you says professional and technical includes six hundred. What do you mean by that?
That's for F, this, that's for this year's fiscal. Budget. We have the six hundred dollars in. This year's budget, and that is earmarked for that GIS mapping.
And that's a one time thing.
That's FY twenty-three. FY twenty-four.
What is that? They allocated eight fifty on that.
That's two fifty. There's two fifty towards conferences. We haven't gone to any conferences. Um. I don't even know if any.
Okay. It's, it is included in the.
Yeah, yeah. So next time, what I'm saying is we have the opportunity because. To go to conferences. And the other thing we're combating is finally, these conferences are starting to be in person again. They didn't have any during COVID. I went to one that was through Preservation Massachusetts. Online, it was only twenty-five dollars, but so. I don't think they're doing that again, so I would assume that that one would be in person. So it's a chance to go to these in-person conferences, and it's going to cost you more than twenty-five dollars.
Hmm.
GIS mapping, that, that's not a manual.
No, no, because it's a one time thing. It's. It's only when we have the survey and planning grants that they make the historic maps and. For FY twenty-four, we don't have any more updates being completed.
Oh. Okay.
Seven hundred dollars, good? Yeah. Communications? I thought thirty?
Stamps are going up.
I know, we had fifty. Last year. I don't even think we, we didn't get anywhere near fifty.
Ten thirty.
Lowered.
Thirty, thirty, fine, okay. Other supplies, that would include the notebooks that we buy. Folders, um. The acetate sheets that we might need, um. Any archival supplies that we might need. I'm not sure. We started that project. In the vault, and we still have to finish that. Um. So we do have some archival supplies. We use quite a few of the boxes. This is where, where we were going to talk about buying signs for um the buildings. That's where the.
Or buildings, yeah.
For buildings, that's where this would come from. Um.
Am I wrong in thinking that the signs for the historic buildings were going to be the oval shaped?
Right.
Everyone, but who's going to pay for those? We were?
Yeah, if, if, I don't know. I, I reached out to Mike and Jim today. And asked, you know, would that be appropriate? Who else would pay for it? Because it's not.
Well, I thought it's a town owned building, so.
And that's.
I didn't know. Why didn't, we're gonna, we're gonna pay for one for the one room schoolhouse? I mean.
Exactly.
I would. I would, why, why are we paying for that?
Why wouldn't we?
It's town money. I would say anywhere.
I was thinking someone else was. I, I didn't think coming out of our budget.
Yeah, it's a town.
Huh?
Town owns buildings, so there, we have to pay things.
I, I would say.
Yeah, that, I just wasn't thinking we were paying for them.
Oh.
So what do you want to say? Four or five buildings? Times, is the price ever gonna go up or is it gonna stay at one?
Or do you want to just split, you know, split them up, see, you know, if we can get a couple out of this year's budget?
Okay, I was gonna say do a couple.
A couple a year.
Okay.
That is where we teach science supplies back.
I thought about on that subject, say four or five, I'm also getting it, which is putting it in, getting it done as, as a group. In other words, we sit down, we'll identify.
Oh, there's five, there's five buildings. It's the Old Town Hall, Smith Memorial Hall, the Carnegie Building, the segregated schoolhouse and the North Dayton Fire Barn. Did I get them? Yeah.
That was the one I had never thought of until I drove by one day and said, hey, that's a cool building.
Aren't there two buildings there? There's a barn and.
Yeah, there is two. You're right.
So you want two?
Well, I don't know, the second one qualifies, is it?
Why not? It's town owned and it's old, why not?
It's not 100 years old.
It's not, yeah, it's on this. Yes, it is. Yeah, yep. Or they're close.
At this fire station?
The fire station?
The, hey, it's the fire barn.
One is a barn. There's two buildings there and they're both listed.
One's a metal.
One they just.
Metal.
One is called the North Dayton Fire Barn.
Yeah.
Oh, she's looking at that list.
Right, 1925. So that one's not quite 100 years old. Uh, and the other one is the North Dayton Fire Station from 1920. So that one would be.
It's down there for two buildings.
What was the addition that they just put on? Just.
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm looking at the fire station. Where is the other?
Right beside it.
Right beside it, isn't it?
There's the original brick building.
Right.
And then they've got a metal.
Right, space.
Space building attached to it.
Which I thought we just put on about 20 years ago.
It has, it has the same address of 132, so we'll have to figure that out. And in fact, that's one of the things that Stacy was questioning here too. So.
So you remember it's just.
Time for a field trip. Yeah, you go, I drove by there.
My son said there were two buildings.
Yeah.
Very surprised that.
Yeah.
There's the original brick building.
Right.
And then there's the metal garage that they added. That's only been.
Yeah, it's not that long.
Less than 10 years.
Yeah.
We're not talking about the metal building.
Right. Okay, so it would just be one sign then?
Yeah, the original.
Yes.
The annex, metal is like an annex.
It's an annex.
You're right. Alright, we'll, we'll figure that out. So.
But anyway, say five, 300, $600.
Yeah. But it could be possible with our budget that, because we have our budget this year, that we could buy one or two signs this year and do two more next year. Okay? Because, you know, if you take a look at what our budget is, we're, we're still like at 1,500.
That'd be fine.
Alright, so we do, see if we can do two this year. And we could put, maybe do say three next year. And that would.
We're losing the 600 for the, the computer mapping thing. All we're gonna do is replace it with five signs.
Signs are more important.
So that $600 for mapping is, is for how many houses, not including the ones that are.
It'll be the 90 houses that Stacy will do, is doing now. The 90 properties that she is doing now.
Okay.
Yes. Alright, so what's our pleasure? Three, two, six?
Five.
Want to go for the whole wide? Do you want to try doing two this year? If you, we only have five or six.
Yeah.
And if we did three next year, so if you put in two for this year, three for next year, that could be it.
Alright. Agreed?
Yeah.
Alright, so three.
Put in, you mean putting it in as a line item or adding it to the?
Adding it to the other supplies. We cannot redo the, the numbers we have. Those are assigned to us. I suppose we could probably build a budget like that, but we don't have to. It's all lumped together. It's all lumped together. 132. So for three signs, it's like 396 with the shipping, because we'd have to pay shipping, we wouldn't have to pay taxes on it. And the shipping is a medium flat rate box at 1705 from each sign, so. So I would say 400, if it even. Travel. If we are traveling to conferences, I figured one is in Plymouth.
One is in Paris, friends.
What's the mileage of these things?
The mileage is now 65.5 cents per mile. Plymouth is 33 miles one way, so it's 66 miles round trips. So one round trip would cost you $43.56. If you go to Worcester, it's 61 miles. It would be $122. One trip would be $80.52. So.
You've only got $50 put in there.
He's intended to allow all of us to go to these or he's representative?
Representatives. He can carpool, you know, there's a number of options. I think we do have to put something in and we have to be sure that we are putting in for the reimbursement because it is wear and tear on your vehicle. Big weird face. So say you're going to Plymouth and two drivers decide to go, two carloads of people or drivers, whatever, it's like 87.12. If someone decides to go to Worcester, it's like $80.52. Again, in my, I don't know, $100, $120 to cover the mileage? 125?
Just walk better.
Yeah. 20, 120? So we also have to give the rationale for these. So the rationale for the travel is very clear. It's travel to conferences slash workshops at the rate. And the other supplies, I'm just gonna put office supplies. Um. Markers, as markers, remarkers, three historical markers.
Sorry?
Yep. Communications is just basically mailings and stamps. Professional and technical is for the seven members to attend the conferences. And equipment repairs were for any repairs for our things that we own. Alright, so we have a budget of $1,350.
Do you say 14 or do you say 13, 50, 50?
I'd say 14.
14?
You can't say 16.
That's too much.
No.
Can't say. 14 is fine. We just made allowance anyway.
Yeah, you better have some wiggle room.
Put it under the travel for the gas.
It's probably split it. $150. So actually travel like 130?
If we invite people to give a presentation, they're coming from a different town. We'll have to pay for their mileage right as well.
Yeah.
So, not just.
And then put the others under our other supplies. That would make that 520?
What about refreshments for the Boston Post Kane?
No, because you can't buy food. It's can't buy flowers.
Can't buy flowers either.
Food, because it's not for the general public. It's for a specific occasion.
Even though the general public's invited.
Sure.
But.
On that case.
It's a gray area.
Have them bring their own booze. They want to drink.
House for ice cream.
Alright. Alright, so I have $50 equipment, for equipment. $700 for professional and technical. 30 for communications. Makes sense. 520 for office supplies. And 130 for travel.
And what was the equipment again? Maybe we could put the signs in.
No, that doesn't make sense, Pat. I have too much somewhere. I have too much in. Alright. 15 in equipment, 700 in professional and technical, 30 in communications, 490 in office supplies, 130 in travel. Did you get 1,400, Irene?
Yeah, I got a big mess. Why did that not come out right? I got 1,430.
I level math. It's past 730, that's why. It could be my adding. Yeah, that should be right.
1,400, yeah.
Okay.
1,400?
Yeah.
Yep. Alright, so that's less than like this, this year then?
Yeah. Okay, because we don't have the GIS mapping, but more than the previous year. Alright. Are we good?
We're good.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve FY24 budget of $1,400, $1,400. There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Okay. We are at the end. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I was talking about the Boston Kane, but maybe not.
No, because we, we'll put that on the next agenda. I didn't put it on this one because we had a lot of visitors.
Oh, okay.
And we decided we were gonna try and keep it as short as we could.
I did submit it. I don't know where I submitted it.
You want the Boston Post Kane on the next agenda?
Just to get it up to the, to do this.
Okay. Did we vote to adjourn?
We didn't get a so moved yet.
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.